Awesome. Well, welcome, everyone. I'm calling the February 10th Special City Council Meeting to order. Councilmember Marts, as you can see, is joining us remotely. So we do have all six council members here. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and both staff members of the public may -- both staff and members of the public may be participating tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda this evening is public comment, and this is a time that the public may address their council in person or virtually. If you've signed up in advance, we'll call on you first. If you're joining us virtually, look for the raise hand or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, do not worry. I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So, City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments tonight?
Yes.
Super. So if you are making comments tonight, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Isaguas programs, projects, services, or events, and comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while it's not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you are virtual when you're recognized, unmute your microphone. If you're in the room, this is the lectern that we're going to be using tonight, and the microphone is already on. State your name and address and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and don't respond, we will have to continue the meeting. So please rejoin if you can. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking time to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, James Marquardt.
Great. James, if you want to come up over here, that'd be great. And if you're looking for the timer, do you want to set the time for James? You can keep track of your time right there, James.
Good evening. I'm James Marquardt. I live at 575 Mount Everest Lane, southwest, up on Squawk Mountain. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm speaking today about an urgent public safety issue affecting our children. Two weeks ago, my son and his friend were physically assaulted on city property. In investigating this incident, I've discovered this was not an isolated event. The same location has been the site of at least three other assaults in the past year. Through conversations with other parents, I've learned of multiple similar incidents, ranging from unprovoked violence to full-on sexual harassment of children, all on city property. These aren't minor scuffles that are happening. Some of these assaults have been severe enough to require medical response teams and monitoring for concussions. The impact on our community is severe. One family has already been forced to change schools in order to escape the assaults and is now undergoing counseling to deal with trauma. Another family is planning to leave our city entirely because they simply feel that nothing has been done to prevent assaults from happening. These families are making difficult choices because they don't feel that their children are safe in public places. Currently, our only recourse is to call 911 after an incident occurs. Though some families have stopped reporting incidents entirely, having lost faith that anything will change because of their call. Meanwhile, these assaults continue to happen in predictable locations at predictable times. This suggests there may be opportunities for preventative measures to better protect our children in public spaces, and yet, after a year of occurrences, we see nothing happening. I must also share a serious concern that has been raised to me after some of the outreach I've done with the community. In discussing these incidents with other community members, I've heard growing frustration that could lead some to take matters into their own hands. While I absolutely do not condone these such actions, I feel obligated to convey just how unsafe and unprotected many in the community feel. I'm here today to ensure this ongoing safety issue is maintained as part of our public record and to ask the council to take the reality of the state of child safety in Isaguas seriously. Please work with us, the people of Isaguas, to figure out how to keep them safe. You should all know that our children's safety matters more to us than anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. City Clerk, is there anyone else that has signed up to speak or is online?
Mayor, we do have at least one member of the public with us online, but I don't see anyone indicating a desire to speak.
Well, thank you. James, thank you for coming and sharing your comments this evening about student safety. Is there -- I don't see anyone else here. The lady over there is actually our attorney, so she's not necessarily part of the public. Just a reminder for anyone that is here that you can talk to your council at any time by emailing them at citycouncil@isaguas.gov. The next item of business this evening, which is the item of business, is AB 8952, City Council Position Number Six Vacancy. The city council currently has a vacancy in position number six. The city council has 90 days to make an appointment to fill the vacancy. The city accepted applications for the vacancy through January 25, and the city council heard presentations from the 12 applicants who met the qualifications at the February 3 city council meeting. At that meeting, the city council chose to forward seven applicants along in the process, and those seven applicants are here with us this evening. Tonight, the council will start by -- sorry. We will start by asking two questions of each applicant, though there may be additional follow-up questions from council. Each applicant will have three minutes to answer each question. There will not be a horrible alarm at the end of your three minutes, but you can see the clock behind. If you lose track of time, our city clerk is going to turn it off at 2:59. So make sure that you are thinking about wrapping up your comments at that time. There was a random draw to determine the order tonight, and Mary, you will be starting us off first with the first question, and we'll go in the order in which you are seated, with Kelly going next. For the second question, we will reverse the order. Similar to the February 3 meeting, following the question-and-answer period, the city council is anticipated to move into executive session to discuss the qualifications of applicants. The city council may choose to narrow the applicants following the executive session or may choose to make an appointment. So, as I said, we'll be starting with Mary and going down the line. And the first question is -- We can scooch. Scooting, absolutely. Yeah. And you're sharing microphones. Make sure the base of the microphone has a red light on it so that folks at home can hear you as well. Perfect. So the first question is, how should the council prioritize the issues of the city while dealing with limited resources?
Okay. Well, I think I've said this to a number of you. I'm not sure if I said this last week. I am super impressed with the city's strategic plan. I think it provides a really excellent, both like identification of priorities as recognized by the city and with input from the city and kind of a cascading plan to implement against those priorities. And then the additional, I call it kind of like the meta-layer of how do you use this plan to make decisions, like assess new ideas that come in, that sort of thing. So for me, when I read the strategic plan, I felt like, wow, this group is actually really well-prepared to, as you have to make decisions, kind of go back, look at what is there on the plan, look at -- and then the dashboards that look at how you're making progress against the plan. I would say, you know, looking at the things that have been identified as the biggest priorities in the plan and the issues that have the sort of biggest gaps against the goals that have been set. I would put those first on the prioritization schedule. So, yeah, that's how I would approach prioritization.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor. Mary. Potentially a mayor, who knows, in some future time. Kelly, the same question, if you want to press the button on the base of the mic. And how would you prioritize the -- how should the council prioritize the issues when dealing with limited resources?
Great. Thank you. Can -- is the mic working? Yeah, so first things first, I think the council has done a really great job, and the community has done a great job of identifying, you know, what are our values as a community? And that's reflected both in the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. And so kind of starting from that shared foundation, we can then, you know, figure out what's most important to us and then where to make the hard choices. I think some of the choices that we make also, you know, it relates to what can the city uniquely do? Where are some of the places where we're doing things now? But we can actually potentially lean harder on, you know, resources from the county, from the state, or also from private individuals, you know, non-governmental partners. So for example, you know, with the arts grants recently, there's the example where King County actually has a lot of arts grants coming up, and so that's an area where we decided that, or you all decided that the city of Isaguas, maybe that's an area where we can lean more on resources from the county. From, you know, the non-governmental organizational perspective, you know, with the urban forestry management plan, this is an issue where I know, you know, the city is like, we don't really have resources to work on this. So how can we partner with non-governmental organizations which may be able to access philanthropic funding, you know, other grants and things like that? So I think figuring out, and then what are some areas where actually it does require the city? For example, things like public safety, and, you know, as we've seen in the recent budget, that is an area that the city has prioritized. I would also say, you know, in terms of prioritization, one thing that I always come back to is the Eisenhower Matrix, which is urgent versus important. So typically, you know, we're always most responsive to the urgent thing. It's like, what's on fire right now? But I think the city has also done a really good job of prioritizing important things, like what are some of the things that could be really bad, but we don't even know about them, like the PFOS issue? That's something where, you know, we proactively went out and found that, and we're addressing that issue. And so I think, you know, combining the values, figuring out what's urgent versus important, and actually, you know, putting a value on important things that if we leave them to fester, it could become a huge, like way more costly issue. And then also figuring out, you know, where the areas where the city is best suited to actually spend its resources and where we can lean on other partners.
Thank you, Kelly. Katya, if anybody would like me to keep reading the question, I can. If it's clear, I don't need to. Would you like me to read it?
Please read it again.
Oh, absolutely. How should the council prioritize the issues of the city while dealing with limited resources?
Thank you. So first of all, I would like to, I basically can just second the first two, the first two members of this group. And I would like to also mention that a wonderful job that's done by the city in strategic and comprehensive plans. But my take on that would be, not only that we have to think what our urgent priorities are or what our priorities that can wait are, but let's say, with some projects, we really have to have a conversation with other responsible parties and get support from them. For example, one of the projects that I was advocating for was a metro flex, and I was very happy that it got a support one and a half year ago. And I know that now we are in a little bit in a crisis with that. And I'm really hoping and looking forward to the King County Metro to be able to help us with that. And maybe some private investors that can also help supporting this kind of project. So that is my take on that.
Thank you, Katya. Chris?
Good evening. So the resources are there, having worked on the strategic plan task force as the co-chair, collaborating with Council President Walsh, Councilmember Tola, looking at, you know, that's our North Star, right? So our North Star is already set with their strategic plan itself. So now what are we doing to work within that as far as the priorities itself? So you've got the mobility, you have the economic vitality and development, you have civil services in that. So to Katya's point with the metro flex, hearing you continue to utilize the resources within the public, continuing to seek feedback from the actual community members, that's important. The committee that we had had an aspect from everybody. We had a community members, we had boards and commissions, we had city council. The mayor was involved, our city administration was involved. And that's the resources that we necessarily need to set the priorities that we already have in place, which is the strategic plan. The comprehensive plan is over that, but their strategic plan is what we already have in place. So when we look at the actual public survey, public safety is something we heard tonight that is really important. Continuing to focus on how can we better our response times in our police department, how we can provide fire, you know, resilience within our community with the fire resiliency, and maybe looking at how we are going to better prepare for emergency situations, both residentially and business-wise, speed to get back to business, right? Business resiliency is important. We have the bomb cyclone. So the resources that are there, we just can continue to add on to that by either seeking additional resources from within or looking for resources from without, but always keeping the public first and foremost in everything we do. That's our resource that we really need to, because that's what we ultimately are about, is the community. And then on top of that, you look at the economic development plan that's under that, which I also worked on, and the actual environmental plan that's under there. The plans are under there. So again, we have the resources. Since it's continuing to now hold ourselves accountable to make those actions go on those plans, the plan's set. So I think we have the resources.
Thank you, Chris. Eric?
Thank you. As Katya said, I like everything that's been said. I think we have a great group of people here who obviously care very much about the city. I think there are two things that I think I bring to the table in regard to understanding the relationship between our strategic objectives and our budget. And I always, when it comes to project development or for the food bank, for example, the question is, well, what can we not do and spend money on? And what are the risks of not doing those things? So if we wanted to advance all of the strategic plan objectives, how far can we afford to go with each one of them while understanding that if we don't go far enough, that the risks of not doing that may outweigh the financial benefit of not spending that money? So I'll cede my time to others.
Thank you, Eric. Jeff?
Boy, I'm glad I'm not going last, Tina. I think that the only thing I haven't heard on there, and I'm not going to repeat the other, because I think they're all very sound, is I think the one component, if there is, if we feel there is such a priority of public safety perhaps, or bomb cyclone, or holy cow, Sound Transit now wants to be here in 10 years instead of 20, I think we're going to hear from the community, and we need to do our best to solicit the community for any of these issues. So if you're saying, hey, the community is feeling that this is a priority, will we go back and start with the strategic plan to make sure? Okay, well, let's make sure that that is in our guiding principles of what are the six important things. Then let's further validate it with, okay, if this is as big an issue that everyone is saying, either with surveys or open houses or the roadshow, I'd mentioned those types of things, let's validate that it is that kind of priority. You'll hear it if it's a priority. I don't need to tell you that. I'm sure you guys are made aware of when there's some new issue that a lot of people feel passionate about. They're going to bring it to you. And I think there's reason for precedence, but I don't think that they always should be ironclad. There are parts of the budget that I've learned, obviously, are, look, these are locked down. These are areas we will not and shall not touch either because of the strategic plan or public safety. But I do think there are other places, and we're living in such an evolving society right now, where we may not be able to even anticipate or be aware of what the big issue is. And I'd love to hear what the council thought of a pandemic in 2016. I'm sure there was almost nothing, you know, in the book there. I think it's important to have the flexibility to look at different times. I was impressed, and Chris, this isn't a patronizing thing, but you had mentioned during the bond, the bond was a really hot topic and is a hot topic. But at the meeting, there had been certain areas where the council did not get involved with, yet because of the public, I'm not going to say outcry, public concern in those things, it was time to maybe adapt with that and maybe weigh in on something like that. So I thought that was a good example of, hey, we've done things a certain way, but it doesn't mean we always have to do them that way. And I think any organization that is a learning organization has to always be able to be flexible on that.
Thanks, Jeff. Tina, you drew the metaphorical short straw, so happy to get any straw. But you do get to go first next time.
Sounds good. Yes, so I love all of these ideas. I think that they're really wonderful. I think something that I would add that I haven't heard here is how we can really be asking questions as a council about the impact of the dollars that we are spending, the dollars that we do have. Where is our scope of action going to be? And I think prioritizing impact of dollars spent would be a great way to address that. And one thing that I would want to do is to expand, it's kind of counter-indicative, but essentially looking at expanding our city's conceptualization of what public safety entails. And so thinking about how safety doesn't just mean to my person and property, but it also means for housing, and it means for food and resource and ability to live in a system where my healthcare costs are not going to bankrupt me and my family. And so I've had direct experience with the impact of carceral logic. I've written literally in the same car, you know, with police, and been to houses, doing probation checkups. I've sat with clients in court. I've witnessed parents having their rights severed. I testified. I've been a party to that system, and I can really give witness to the destruction and harm that it wreaks in communities, especially communities of color and those who are marginalized. So I just want to say that while I believe in supporting an effective police work, and I don't want to say that we need to divert all these funds, I just think that if we think about where we're spending our money, what's the impact going to be? And kind of speaking to the point that I had made last week when thinking about moving upstream, where our dollars are going to be spent in a way that's actually going to be making a difference in people's lives? You know, something that happened to us on day one in Isaguas. My family was a victim of crime. Our moving van, our moving truck, a 26-foot-long truck, was stolen from the Motel 6. It was taken to a neighboring community, dumped out, ransacked, and all of our possessions were essentially thrown kind of down a hillside into blackberry gravel. Some of them are actually taken and stolen and have never been recovered. So I owe the fact that I have today my baby, my kids' baby books with their little footprints, to good police work. So I just want to say, like, I embody this, like, as a real need in our community, that safety is really important and that, you know, it's dismaying to hear about assaults happening in our town. But I also know that we have to move upstream, and to be able to really address that issue, we have to spend the money really wisely. And I know the ways, you know, that we need to do that are not always so quantifiable as metrics that police can provide, you know, about how many arrests have been made. It's hard to discount something that never happens, but that's really what I want. I want that to have never happened to any family, including my own. And I know those are the answers that we need.
Thank you, Tina. The second question that we're going to ask this evening is, you have now heard from all of the other candidates twice and been able to read their material. So, Tina, why should we pick you?
A little bit of a double-edged sword than to go, because I'm all like--
I know, I know. We just got done.
Take some water.
Yeah, take some water. Thanks.
We're having a water break here.
Thank you.
What to you had her best?
Thank you. Okay, so basically, I believe that I am uniquely qualified because I have experience that I don't see represented on this council. And like I mentioned beforehand, like, having experience directly with these different human service agencies. I've worked in community mental health pretty much my entire professional career up until about seven months from now, when I launched my private practice. But I also have worked as a volunteer in many different capacities. So I've been a court-appointed special advocate in Maricopa County. I, last year, participated in our point-in-time count here, interviewing individuals who are coming as part of the housing authority, trying to track homelessness in our communities. I, you know, like I said, have worked with adolescents in our town who are struggling with isolation, who are struggling with addiction, struggling with self-harm. So I believe that I offer that unique perspective and that person who has been downstream in a system, somebody, like I said before, who, you know, I can relate to feeling frustrated and lost and isolated myself as a professional. And so that's part of what I wanted to do in my private practice, is really addressing those issues with other healthcare workers so that we can have more folks in this community working in mental health in a sustaining way. So it's something that I'm really passionate about, and it's something that I think that my skill set and work experiences would bring a unique perspective.
Thank you, Tina. Why you, Jeff?
Thanks, Tina. That was great. It's tough in this setting, because I see seven people that could all very easily and appropriately be sitting over on that side. But one theme, I think, and I've mentioned this a couple times, I think any time that a decision-making board like this can have broad input to its decision-making process is a good thing. And what I mean by that is being exposed to a lot of different things throughout the Isaguas community. We've learned some folks are so amazing at what they're doing in a very deep and meaningful way. I'm an enterprise technology solution seller. I've been doing that for 30 years. I hear from a client, we bring together a solution, and we have experts. I don't understand half of the solutions, quite frankly. A lot of the times, I'm representing. I am trained to be, and what I'm really good at is I'm an inch deep and a mile wide. That's me in Isaguas. I'm the coach, I'm the volunteer, I'm the business leader, I'm the organizer. I'm the advocate for a lot of the small business owners I know. I feel like I've got a very broad understanding of the needs of the people that live here, that rent here, that work here, that commute here, all those different types of things. Can I hold my own on deep policies? Absolutely. And do I know the right people to contact if we have issues or those types of things? Yes. But I think I could be a very loud voice and advocate. Even just from the feedback from last week, I was pleasantly stunned by the amount of folks that live in every different community that watched and, you know, were very positive, but also gave great feedback, and also saw it as their opportunity of, hey, could you bring this up at your next one? I said, well, not quite yet, but not quite yet. But again, just being that sounding board to hear that kind of focus. So I think it really would just be if you want someone that has really walked in all the different areas, not necessarily literally, but has been involved so much with Isaguas, not just as a kid, but in the last 15 years I've lived here, I think I can really bring that view to the community, to the council.
Thank you, Jeff. Eric?
I think I can speak about the breadth of my experience. But I, and, you know, I've worked with hospitals, I've worked with private clients, I'm working with the food bank. My goal in all of those situations is to synthesize what the needs are, understand what the resources are, bring the right people together, and work through solutions. So, you know, from the standpoint of dealing with a hospital project, for example, you know, you talk to the folks from environmental services as well as the orthopedic surgeons and the nurses and everyone in between. And they all have to feel and believe that they are, in fact, stakeholders. And that obviously extends to the community at large in this context. I think the other thing that I've learned over the decades is that you have to learn how to listen and how to care about what everyone is saying and be able to separate wishes from needs, urgency from important, and be able to pull in the right people to discuss and to find the right solutions. The food bank is, I think, a great example. We realized through some research that we needed to have our own building, and we needed to work with the city staff to get zoning changed, to address issues like impermeable surfaces and parking. And so we said, okay, let's be proactive about this. And we did a parking study, which was very favorable. And the city staff worked with us because we recognized that they were the experts in terms of policy and regulations. And it was, you know, the mutual respect, I think, is probably the most tangible thing that I think I can bring to the table.
Thank you, Eric. Chris?
One of my biggest accomplishments so far is being named 2022 Small Businessperson of the Year by the chamber. And the reason why is because I reflect back on that is because I'm about the people. I'm not, I don't have my own intent. I did it organically. I didn't seek for anybody's nomination. I didn't seek for anybody's approval. I organically did it by helping my members every day, whether it be a community member, whether it be a fellow council member, whether it be a-- whether it be a community member, whether it be a fellow council member, whether it be a city staff. You know, I first, I approach everything at my work and in my personal life genuinely through not having an agenda, I listen to, understand, I ask questions to stay curious. If I don't know something, I go seek the answer and I give the why if we can't. And so back to my background, also chaired the Economic Vitality Commission for the last three and a half years. And I've been immensely like gracious and like thankful for working with 12 other additional commissioners just to push along the Economic Development Plan of the city, which is allowing us to set the guideposts of how business is done in Issaquah, which was recently passed in December. You know, things like just financial literacy for the businesses. I've led those classes through the Economic Development Plan, business retention to keep the businesses in Issaquah, different things that we worked through the economic plan to, how to do business in the time of need of a pandemic or when the business isn't there. You're asking business members, whether you show up at their business, go to where they're at. Also, serving on the strategic plan, I've seen the benefit of reaching out to the community, also specifically seeing the guideposts and how those impact council and how they make the different changes. And yes, the budget, I'm a banker, right? Where's the money being spent? So in time of budget, I'm able to break down financials. I'm able to look at where the money is being spent. I'm able to also ask the curious questions as to how can we get better at saving money? Because I believe that's a big opportunity to enhance our budget is for future initiatives to save the money for future projects such as the fleet, like we did in the budget. If we have 40-some-odd fleets to, you know, to finish, we should have the money saved up for that, have savings account essentially, right? How are we leveraging that and making money for the city? So my financial background of leadership will also do that. My ability to also connect with people. I have many connections within the small business community to better talk to them because I come from a small business family. So I know the right questions to ask in the business cycle. And with that, I can bring that aspect to the council, to have that voice, to bring everybody to the table so we can continue to move business forward and how to properly work together for development projects such as the Central Issaquah Plan and the Future Initiatives that we do have like the Crossing of I-90. We do have a very much need for business resiliency and residential resiliency in a time of emergency. So that being that person that serves the council, that's what I would bring to you.
I thought we weren't going to have that.
You're good. You're good. I'm not like last week, so I'm good.
Scared me. Katya.
Thank you, I'm good.
Thank you. Can I have the question be repeated one more time?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The second question is, after hearing from the other candidates in a couple of different sessions, why should we pick you?
Thank you. So first of all, I'm representing an immigrant community of Issaquah, which is right now is at around 30%. Not only I have lived in the Pacific Northwest and particularly Seattle area, Issaquah area, Everett area for over 20 years. I have been doing my small business here for about the same time. And I know very well all of the issues that small businesses are going through. Then I'm working every day with our local children in our community, with local families in our community, and I'm doing this for about 20 years. And I have a lot of students who started with me when they were like three and now they're in their early twenties and all going through me almost every day. They turned from students into teachers in my studio and my partners. So I'm very deeply connected to the community. And then another thing is that the moment I kind of like, I was able to start my service for the community. First of all, I ran for Issaquah Highlands Community Association Board of Directors. Then when the opportunity arose, I was running for the city council already and I know what it is to campaign. And I took the opportunity when I was chosen for the, sorry, Planning Policy Commission and I'm currently serving there, and as well as Commercial Property Strategic Committee. And I have started some work, that is my kind of like major thing. I've already started some work there. The work that I think that is very important for our city as affordable housing programs, cohousing programs, commercial spaces that are affordable, new spaces that will probably, we can get, hopefully we can get, commercial spaces here that are affordable for many businesses. And I would like to continue this work as a member of the city council to make sure those things are done. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Katya. Kelly?
Great. Thank you. So why me? So I think one of the biggest things that's really unique about Issaquah is that our strategic plan has environmental sustainability as a core value. You know, the first time around, what I've heard from those who around that time was like, really? Like no other city puts environmental sustainability as a core value. Well, Issaquah, we're different. We're built different. And so to my knowledge, I'm the only candidate who really comes from an environmental sustainability background. And I know that that's really important to the council. And, you know, the person who held the seat previously, Victoria Hunt, did have a really strong environmental background and was a strong environmental voice. With my experience serving as board president of Issaquah Alps Trails Club, including, you know, learning from David Kapler, who was himself on city council for 20 years, I think I understand, you know, the unique balance of sustainability and growth and development that Issaquah has done such a great job of over our history. And also, you know, this is something that we've been doing in partnership with other agencies like the State Department of Natural Resources, state parks, King County. And I have, you know, been working with them already, including recently, you know, there's some more potential acquisitions that we're working on with King County, which are super important for Issaquah and our quality of life here. I would also note that my professional background in clean energy and actually green financing is really important to Issaquah. So my clients are actually real estate developers and owners around the country that are, you know, trying to build clean buildings. Issaquah's a leader on that and I want to help us continue that leadership. But also in my work, I've seen examples of environmental policies that are poorly implemented and it's a headache for everyone, it's a headache for the city, it's a headache for our clients. And I want to make sure that Issaquah, you know, we're leading on climate action but in ways that make sense and are easy for the businesses to comply with. And finally, one thing that I would note is that, you know, the way that I would approach civic engagement is, you know, for example, after the pandemic, I actually started a group-run club in fall of 2021. And, you know, that brought people together in Issaquah. And now it's, you know, become a community. And there's folks there who, you know, aren't really as engaged in politics, but they have opinions on issues. So I think, to me, I've always kind of viewed myself as like a community organizer in that sense, bringing together folks that are maybe, you know, not as engaged in the political process and trying to bring them into the process. You know, I've encouraged a bunch of them to apply on city commission. So we'll see how many of them actually end up doing that. And so, you know, on council, I would hope to, you know, do outreach to those types of groups, not just the ones that are, you know, civically, like explicitly civically oriented, but other groups, like for example, like the yarn store has like a knitting circle. And I was part of that for quite some time. And, you know, doing outreach to those types of groups and bringing people together and, you know, getting them aware of the city where they are.
Thank you, Kelly. Mary, you get to have the last word this evening.
Short shot, no. So I am the only lawyer among this group. I know I wouldn't be the only lawyer on the council. But the particular kind of law that I practice, so just a reminder, I work at Microsoft and I spend a lot of time in synthesizing and analyzing regulations and assessing like how you come into compliance with that. So and often the kind of stack of regulations, right? What's global, what's at the federal level, what's at the state level, what's at the local level? Thinking about how those pieces fit together and then affect the people who are, who have to come into compliance with them. And so I think that perspective helps, you know, gives me a unique skill set to think about what it means to be in a position to be enacting ordinances and developing policies and that sort of thing. So a perspective on what the impact of those policies would be. And then again, just the sort of technical aspects of interpreting regulations and like understanding how what the city is doing fits into what the requirements are at the state level and that sort of thing. So that would be one qualification I think that is unique to me. And then another is this area of technology that I work in. So I work with the AI platform team at Microsoft, which is specifically developing AI technologies that are made available to developers to build into their own solutions. And a lot of what I'm doing as the lawyer for that team is helping think about how we learn when Microsoft has made use of those technologies, how we have thought about doing that in a responsible way and then taking those learnings and making them available to other people, to our customers, and giving them kind of frameworks for thinking about the responsible use of technology in a very structured and organized way and like a methodical way to think through the issues. And so I do expect that, you know, we talk about when you have limited resources and how you want to do things efficiently. I think the city will face proposals and ideas for how to use these new technologies. And I think my understanding, both a little bit of, you know, what are the ways that those technologies are being used and what is it ready for and what is it actually not ready for? And how you approach that in a really intentional way and identify the sort of sensitivities and issues you need to think through to use technology in a responsible way.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you all for answering those questions. For the next part of the meeting, we are going to go into executive session like the council did last time. It's a closed session. And so this executive session is to discuss the qualifications of appointment per RCW 42.3.110-N1-NH. It's expected to take approximately 30 minutes. Action will be anticipated to happen out here back in the regular session. The executive sessions are closed to the public. And please stay because there could be a couple of executive sessions this evening. We're really not sure how this will all play out. And so now we will be going into executive session at 7:12 PM this evening. And we're going to go upstairs for that. Would the council like a few-minute break before you head upstairs? Okay, bathroom break, drink, okay. So please stay here and we will be back.
Councilmember Martz, we'll see you in the other virtual meeting in a few minutes.
Councilmember Martz, we'll see you in the other virtual meeting in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Tola, can you let me know if you can hear us? Tola, can you let me know if you can hear us? Tola, can you let me know if you can hear us?
I can hear you just fine. I can hear you just fine. I can hear you just fine.
Fantastic, thanks. Chance, could you get us back on camera, please? Fantastic, thanks. Chance, could you get us back on camera, please? Fantastic, thanks. Chance, could you get us back on camera, please? Thank you. So we are back in open session at 8:02 PM. Thank you. So we are back in open session at 8:02 PM, and I want to explain first Thank you. So we are back in open session at 8:02 PM, and I want to explain first And I want to explain first the next process. The council had many choices here, but what the next process. The council had many choices here, but what they have decided to do is the next process. The council had many choices here, but what they have decided to do is they have decided to do is to narrow the candidates down and not take a vote on any to narrow the candidates down and not take a vote on any individual candidate at this to narrow the candidates down and not take a vote on any individual candidate at this individual candidate at this time. They are still looking for some more information prior time. They are still looking for some more information prior to taking that vote. So time. They are still looking for some more information prior to taking that vote. So to taking that vote. So I'm going to move into this process now where I ask council I'm going to move into this process now where I ask council members for nominations, and I'm going to move into this process now where I ask council members for nominations, and members for nominations, and when there are no more nominations, I will close it, and when there are no more nominations, I will close it, and that will be the slate that when there are no more nominations, I will close it, and that will be the slate that that will be the slate that they will be voting on to move forward. they will be voting on to move for it. Okay. Would a council member like to nominate one they will be voting on to move for it. Okay. Would a council member like to nominate one Okay. Would a council member like to nominate one applicant to move forward in the appointment applicant to move forward in the appointment process? Councilmember Ray? applicant to move forward in the appointment process? Councilmember Ray? process? Councilmember Ray?
I'd like to nominate Chris Richly. I'd like to nominate Chris Richly. I'd like to nominate Chris Richly.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Councilmember DeMichele? Councilmember DeMichele? Councilmember DeMichele?
I would like to nominate Tina Hayes. I would like to nominate Tina Hayes. I would like to nominate Tina Hayes.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Thank you. Any other nominations? Thank you. Any other nominations? Council President? Council President? Council President?
I would like to nominate Kelly Jiang. I would like to nominate Kelly Jiang. I would like to nominate Kelly Jiang.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Thank you. Any other nominations? Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, at this point in time, I am not seeing any other nominations, so the nominations Okay, at this point in time, I am not seeing any other nominations, so the nominations Okay, at this point in time, I am not seeing any other nominations, so the nominations are closed. Chris Richly, Tina Hayes, and Kelly Jiang. Is there any discussion of the are closed. Chris Richly, Tina Hayes, and Kelly Jiang. Is there any discussion of the are closed. Chris Richly, Tina Hayes, and Kelly Jiang. Is there any discussion of the nominees, or would you like to move to vote on the slate to move forward? Council President? nominees, or would you like to move to vote on the slate to move forward? Council President? nominees, or would you like to move to vote on the slate to move forward? Council President?
At this time, we've agreed not to really talk about individual characteristics or At this time, we've agreed not to really talk about individual characteristics or At this time, we've agreed not to really talk about individual characteristics or anything, so I don't want you to think that us not speaking to, you know, what we have anything, so I don't want you to think that us not speaking to, you know, what we have anything, so I don't want you to think that us not speaking to, you know, what we have heard says anything, but man, is this tough. This is incredibly tough, because we have heard says anything, but man, is this tough. This is incredibly tough, because we have heard says anything, but man, is this tough. This is incredibly tough, because we have an amazing, amazing group of people in front of us who we all could have seen on council, an amazing, amazing group of people in front of us who we all could have seen on council, an amazing, amazing group of people in front of us who we all could have seen on council, and so we just want to say that as a starting point. We have to get down to one, and so and so we just want to say that as a starting point. We have to get down to one, and so and so we just want to say that as a starting point. We have to get down to one, and so the goal is just to try and streamline the process as much as possible, so that we can the goal is just to try and streamline the process as much as possible, so that we can the goal is just to try and streamline the process as much as possible, so that we can really think through what those qualities are. So, just wanted to say that. really think through what those qualities are. So, just wanted to say that. really think through what those qualities are. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Council President. So council will take one vote on moving all of those Thank you, Council President. So council will take one vote on moving all of those Thank you, Council President. So council will take one vote on moving all of those nominee forward in the appointment process. If there is an objection, and I'm looking nominee forward in the appointment process. If there is an objection, and I'm looking nominee forward in the appointment process. If there is an objection, and I'm looking for one, we can vote on them individually. Is there any objection? for one, we can vote on them individually. Is there any objection? for one, we can vote on them individually. Is there any objection? Not seeing any. Hearing none, the council members will vote on the nominees as a group. Not seeing any. Hearing none, the council members will vote on the nominees as a group. Not seeing any. Hearing none, the council members will vote on the nominees as a group. All those in favor of moving Chris Richly, Tina Hayes, and Kelly Jiang forward, please All those in favor of moving Chris Richly, Tina Hayes, and Kelly Jiang forward, please All those in favor of moving Chris Richly, Tina Hayes, and Kelly Jiang forward, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. signify by saying aye and raising your hand. signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying no and raising your hand. That carries six and Those opposed signify by saying no and raising your hand. That carries six and Those opposed signify by saying no and raising your hand. That carries six and oh, a unanimous vote. So we will move forward in the process. So I want to thank everybody oh, a unanimous vote. So we will move forward in the process. So I want to thank everybody oh, a unanimous vote. So we will move forward in the process. So I want to thank everybody who has participated up to this point. I know you've put a lot of hard work and effort, who has participated up to this point. I know you've put a lot of hard work and effort, who has participated up to this point. I know you've put a lot of hard work and effort, and it was very obvious to everybody sitting up here and to our, I'm sure, our audience and it was very obvious to everybody sitting up here and to our, I'm sure, our audience and it was very obvious to everybody sitting up here and to our, I'm sure, our audience at home as well. I'm going to, at this point in time, ask the council if we could take at home as well. I'm going to, at this point in time, ask the council if we could take at home as well. I'm going to, at this point in time, ask the council if we could take a little recess for five minutes and allow the three that have been nominated to move a little recess for five minutes and allow the three that have been nominated to move a little recess for five minutes and allow the three that have been nominated to move forward to be seated, and let everybody else either stay for the rest of it, or whatever forward to be seated, and let everybody else either stay for the rest of it, or whatever forward to be seated, and let everybody else either stay for the rest of it, or whatever they feel like doing. Is that okay with you all? Okay, we'll take a few minute recess. they feel like doing. Is that okay with you all? Okay, we'll take a few minute recess. they feel like doing. Is that okay with you all? Okay, we'll take a few minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. While we are waiting for Councilmember, while we are waiting for Councilmember Hall, we have Councilwoman Mertz back. Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Just for information, I'm going to ask the council if they would like to go back into executive session at this point in time, or if they would like to ask you additional questions. If they would like to ask you additional questions, they'll have a conversation up here about what they might want to ask. I'll keep track, and then we will do the same thing as before. We'll start with somebody, move around, and make sure we are alternating, and these are not pre-planned questions. These are ones that they may have thought of when they were up in executive session, talking about qualifications. They may be for one candidate, they may be for all three. So it's really up to them. They have a lot of discretion at this point as to what they'd like to do. And now we're just waiting for Councilmember Hall. We are on camera, Councilmember Hall. I just explained what the rest of the process will be. So at this point in time, I would like the council to let me know through an indication of your microphones whether or not, if you'd like to speak, whether or not you'd like to go back into executive session, or would you prefer to ask some additional questions at this point in time? Deputy Council President?
I have a question I'd like to ask.
That is great. And it sounds like a few of you may. So Deputy Council President, if you'd like to ask, and it can be for everybody, or just a candidate, your choice. Sure?
Okay. So this is for everybody. There's a lot of issues that are in front of us, and none of us can know everything. So if you could tell us, what is one issue facing the city that you really feel that you don't know very well, and how are you going to learn about it?
Let's start with Chris, Kelly, Tina, and then I'll switch it up for the next one.
One area that I don't know well, well, I would say it would, I would say it's probably the environmental piece of it, but, I mean, looking at, you know, what I do know about the environmental stewardship and the strategic plan, I know the foundation of it, but then I would get, you know, networked through the different connections I do have through the city, whether it's staff, or it's, you know, friends of Isquah Salmon Hattery, I'm connected well with Mark, the executive director, just different things I can do to learn about different things. Samamish State Park connections through the Quonos Club that I have, to talk to them about different concerns that they may have. Looking at different, you know, past, you know, having sat in, you know, 15-plus council meetings, I know environmental, you know, stewardship is important to the city, so it's continuing to ask my fellow council members, and, you know, leverage those resources that we do have around the importance of the tree canopy and the fire dangers that we do have imposed, and then how the budget works with that in order to, you know, gain a better perspective of being better prepared for emergency situations, but I would, that's what I'd end it with.
Thank you. Kelly? Kelly, can I get you to push? There you go.
Great. Sorry about that. One issue that I think is coming up for the council that I don't know very much about is the issue with the facilities, and in particular, the city jail, as well as, you know, the new potential for a new city hall. So I think, you know, the city is already on a good track with that, with putting together a citizen commission, and so I would, you know, listen to the recommendations of the commission, as well as, you know, talking with the city staff that have expertise on, you know, what are the issues with the current facilities, what are the needs. And there's a lot of different things to learn there, right? There's like, it might have to go to bond, and then how is the question asked on the bond? Is it like a straight, you know, we propose one thing, and it's a straight yes or no, or is it like a yes, one A, one B type situation? There's different considerations around that, so I'd want to also hear from the community on, you know, what they want, and, you know, what they think makes sense for us as a city, because ultimately, it's going to be something that is voted on by the voters, but we want to come to them with a good proposal. So, that's just one issue.
Thank you, Kelly. Tina?
Yeah, I think one of the things that I ran into when I was preparing for these meetings was the budget and how it's been crafted, and how that process goes as a body. I'm not familiar with that process very much, and so I had reached out to a couple of different council members with some initial questions, and I think that is one of the strengths that I bring, is sort of looking at this budget and not really knowing much about it, and asking for some resources and support, but also knowing, like, what questions to ask in terms of, like, hey, you know, movie, how do these general funds kind of move around year after year? And I'm seeing, you know, a big reduction, or a big increase in some of our spending that we're going to have to do with contracts in Eastside Fire and Rescue and other services, and just thinking about, like, what are, so given this, what do we need to do? What are options going to be? I think that without, even without the experience, I can still analyze and propose questions that speak to the numbers that I am seeing, like, in a broad sense. And I also think that it's a process, and I have heard from many of you, that you just have to go through before you get it. And so, it's a little bit of trial by fire. As somebody, you know, who is not trained in budgets, I would expect that, and I think that's important to normalize that process for any of us, that there will be lots of things, whoever takes on this role, that we'll just have to go through, and then we will know more about it. And so I think the important part is figuring out, like, having that open-minded, open-minded, and like, begin our mind about it.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Deputy Council President. That was a great question. Council President, did you also put your microphone up? Council President?
So one of the issues that I think we can all agree is, at crisis point, is housing, and the affordability and cost of living. So I would like you to speak to what you know about housing, what you see as the problem, and any ways that you would want to address that on council.
Thank you, Council President, and that will be going with Tina, Chris, and then Kelly.
So my understanding is that we're having a problem that's happening nationwide, which is that we have a trouble with affordability and availability here in town, and so we are tasked, as Kelly mentioned earlier, with, you know, that we are really unique and special, and that we also do have these goals around protecting the forests that we live in here. And so I think that there have been some policies in favor of that, that have restricted some of our land use initiatives and policies that have gone into play. But I see, and I believe the council sees this as well, is that our imperative to build up our missing middle kind of policies. And I believe it was Jen Davis Hayes who was talking about the city's approach with the continuum of housing, and thinking about all the different types of housing that a city needs to be in service of all the people that live here. So everything from transitional living, supportive living spaces like Leo House, you know, which just got money through Arch, and regionalization funding and support and connection with our community partners in King County Housing Authority, are really critical and valid, and we're going to need those moving forward, given the amount of challenges that we face with housing in our area. I also think it's really important to strike a balance, right, in figuring out how to utilize the space that we have down in central Isquah and the valley floor, to build enough spaces for folks who want to live here now and also in the future. You know, I, as a parent, as many of you are, I worry about where my kids are going to live, should they choose to make Isquah their home, whether or not they're going to be able to afford their first apartment, even with two or three roommates, whether that's going to be within their price range at that time. And also thinking about housing options, I'm very excited about the TOD project and connecting housing and other kinds of services together. I think that's something that we need to consider with housing, is like, where the housing is going, whether or not it's accessible, whether or not it makes sense with transportation options in town, and how we are going to be also addressing the large issue of transportation and traffic flow in our community. All those things are interconnected, and I think that's something that I can bring to the group, is sort of seeing that bigger picture, seeing how it is all connected.
Thank you, Tina. Chris?
So just to kind of add to what Tina's saying, specifically around the middle-market housing, it's workforce housing. You know, we have a big need for, you know, being connected to the small business on the Economic Vitality Commission. We hear it all the time from our businesses, that they want to be able to have their We hear it all the time from our businesses, that they want to be able to have their employees work in the city. We've been hearing from the Police Department, they want to work in the city that they serve. The Fire Department, to get better response time is going to be huge. So how do we, how do we get to that? Is through the Central Issaquah Plan, making it more accessible to work with developers, to get the AMI work within the Pioneer Project, per se, but also that middle-market housing is really important, to also look at the availability of the variety. So if you're building the duplexes, the triplexes, those are going to open up additional apartments. Maybe somebody's wanting to move out of an apartment to, maybe they don't have a homeownership to, of the $1.1 million average home sale in Issaquah to afford it, but they can afford more of a, you know, $600,000 to $800,000 townhome. At that point, they can then free up an apartment that maybe a workforce person can live in. Now, as far as building additional, that's where the Pioneer Project comes in, which I've also advised on through Economic Vitality Commission, and continue to want to bring that forward, to make sure that we are looking at that. I also sat on the commission, the committee to use of funds, such as the Leo Project, that the council did vote on and fund. So stuff like that, making sure our money is spent on the right processes, and the right amount of housing, and the right use of those funds for housing projects, is important as well. It's transitional. We have the Motel 6 Plan, right, that did not pass with the budget, but that was a very good specific plan that worked for transitional people that may not had a home, but at the same time, it provided them a way to get on the streets. And I personally helped one of those team members, or those members that was going through that, get repairs to his RV. So that, I would have never had that contact if we would have ever had that, so I would like to see that come back, because that was really touching, just for him to come up and express his level of, you know, needing a home, and it was, if it wasn't for that project, it would be there. But I would say the biggest challenge to add is just the middle-market workforce housing is really important to look at, so people can work, play, and live in Issaquah.
Thank you, Chris. Kelly?
Great, thank you. So the question was about, you know, what do I see as the problems facing housing affordability? So as Tina mentioned, this is a problem that's facing the entire state of Washington and a lot of communities around the country. And the communities that aren't facing this problem are facing other problems, like, people don't want to work there because there's no job opportunities. So I think, you know, if you got to pick one of those two problems, being a place that people want to live, it's probably the better of the two to have. And so the question is, you know, we have all these people that want to live here, and I think it's really great that, you know, at a regional level, we have PSRC that's making it so that, hey, actually, everyone, you know, all the cities have to pull our weight in terms of getting new housing built and contributing to the solution. So I think, you know, there's been some changes at the state level that we do have to do, like, you know, allowing missing middle housing, things like cohousing, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, even up to sixplexes, which actually is part of, you know, what makes Old Town so special historically, is that there are these mix of housing options. And so I think figuring out, and the other thing to note there is that, you know, with these ADUs, so far, I think there's been like 40 ADUs built in a city of 40,000 residents. And that's the type of thing that people actually are very in favor of, so how do we actually make it so that people are doing this more? You know, what are the barriers to that? And similarly with missing middle housing, you know, a lot of other towns have passed missing middle housing bills, but where is it, is it getting built? Maybe not as much as people would have thought. And so I think, you know, addressing some of those barriers is going to be really key to getting some of those missing middle housing projects built. The other thing is, you know, with the Central Issaquah Plan, there is going to be, or the plan, is that there's going to be a lot more, or apartment buildings built in downtown Issaquah. And so right now, I think the Central Issaquah Plan, it was written, what, 13 years ago now? And so it's teenager, and there's been almost hardly any development in Central Issaquah. So thinking about what we want this to actually look like, and, you know, actually getting some things built in the way that we want to, right, with the ground floor commercial that makes it so that there's just interesting small businesses for people to go to and check out, and also, you know, bring in sales tax revenue for the city. And so I think there's different, and I think it is really great that with the transit-oriented development, there's the focus on bringing in, you know, income-restricted affordable housing units. I will say, though, that ultimately, like, what we've seen from most other cities is that it, it's very, very rare for like, for there to, for it to be possible for more than like 10% of units overall to be, you know, income-restricted affordable, based on just cross-subsidizing for market rate units. You know, if you try to raise it to like 15 to 20%, then that actually puts a significant damper on new construction. And so that then in turn drives up the price of market rate housing. So I think there's definitely a balance to be struck there of, you know, what is the right level, so that we make sure we're not pricing out everyone, but also maybe making it so that, you know, we have these newer market rate units, that then also, you know, it takes pressure off some of the older units that we might have elsewhere in Issaquah, that those can then become what's called, you know, naturally occurring affordable housing. And that might be a place where then it makes sense for the city to come in and use the, you know, precious few I-HIP dollars that we have, to purchase those and preserve them as affordable housing. So, you know, just thinking about all those different aspects. But ultimately, on some level, it does kind of come down to supply and figuring out, you know, where, where does it make sense to build new housing? Obviously, we're not going to build, you know, outside of the urban growth area, we're not going to build on land that we conserved as open space, and so figuring out how to do that infill in a smart way is really important.
Y'all have done your homework. I am going to look at council again. Councilmember Joe has a question. And Councilmember Martz. Councilmember Joe, can I go to Councilmember Martz first? Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of a, kind of a different sort of a question. So, America is reeling under historical levels of partisan divisiveness, both across the red-blue divide and within the political parties. This council is nonpartisan. How would you help firewall the upcoming council from partisan anger and obstinacy, both in the community and beyond? This to all three applicants.
Thanks. Then I'll start with Kelly, move to Tina, and then Chris.
This is a tough question. I think due to the nature of the issues that are talked about on council, we are very fortunate that it doesn't become as partisan, and I think part of what we've done as a city is, you know, set our values of where we want the city to go, and we generally have alignment on what's most important to us, which insulates it, insulates us from partisan politics to some degree. In terms of, you know, insulating or building a firewall to partisan anger on city council, I think as a council member, it's important to hear, it's important to listen to folks who might not necessarily share the same views on you as everything, and treat everyone respectfully, and also be able to call out when, you know, someone is making, you know, ad hominem attacks or straw man attacks based on partisanship. And I have actually seen some, you know, examples of, and not necessarily from like council members or anything, but I think there's definitely, you know, some undercurrents of partisanship that can crop up, and I think very much, you know, whenever you see that coming, or whenever that comes up, say, okay, let's, you know, stay focused on the issue and not get sidetracked into this partisan thing. I think there's also another partisan-based issue that we're going to be running into on city councils, that, you know, as a blue state, there's probably going to be some issues with federal funding. And so figuring out how to build in those contingencies, and like, even if, you know, we as a governing body are nonpartisan, we're still potentially going to deal with some consequences and fallout from, you know, what happens at the federal level. So, you know, being prepared for that, maybe, and, you know, with the fiscal situation that we're in, maybe we're going to have to be even more, you know, what's the right word? I don't want to use the word conservative, but that might be the, just be more kind of cautious in how we're using our resources, knowing that there could be, you know, additional curveballs coming from other partisan actors out there.
Thank you, Kelly. I think it's Tina next.
So, to echo some of Kelly's points, that the importance of listening, listening deeply, listening with empathy, especially when you disagree on a whole different viewpoints, I think that's something that I'm able to do, and that would help protect us from partisan stonewalling, essentially, that happens. And then I think even maybe more importantly than that, though, is having a mind that can be changed, right? So going into a session like this, and getting your packet, reading that 400 pages, and then being open. Like, you know, I have an idea about how I want to move, and what is important to me, and what would drive my decisions, but I also know that my mind has been changed over and over and over again in those kinds of situations, and I am, I need to be fluid and flexible, because that's how we can, we're going to get the best work done. And those are situations that I've had the pleasure in, in working with, like, the Arts Commission, when I was first talking to Bill Ramos at our neighborhood picnic last summer, and I told him I was interested in city council, and he said, Tina, you need to get yourself on a more serious commission. And I said, Bill, art is serious business. All right? And I believe it is, right? Because what we were doing in the Art Commission is like the grunt work of this, you know, community government. We were making decisions, and we would vote and talk about what kinds of art that we want to have in this community, and I would come into those meetings being like, these are my top, you know, my top votes and my, the people I want to support. And over and over again, I would be pleasantly surprised and bewildered by the kinds of things that would come up and change in those discussions, and would end up, you know, oftentimes either changing my vote, or changing my viewpoint. And I'm just so grateful and appreciative of my fellow commissioners in that particular space for really driving home that lesson for me. I think that's one of the big key components of it.
Thank you, Tina. Chris?
So not to echo everybody, but the biggest thing I look at when you look at is the relationships that you have, and having observed the city council meetings several times, and being, meeting with each of you multiple times, I see the, I see the passion that you all have, and you don't bring your political views to the dice. I do have that same commitment, because I don't have, most of the topics that we do go over and the policies don't have a political stance on anything. It has to do with the community first and foremost, and the people that we serve, similar like I do at work. I serve my, my member. If my member comes in, I'm not going to just force a checking account or a savings account on them, I'm not going to say, this is what you need. I need to ask the questions, I need to stay curious. I need to get to know my member, build a connection, and really a rapport with that person, so they really understand their needs. Back to council, with council, it's the same thing. You get to know the community by learning your, learning and observing, and really taking in the community's aspect of it, along with staff's aspect of it, along with fellow council members, and hearing their point of views. And at the end of the day, if we don't come together with the, with the same agreement and we vote, we, you all stay together, and I would do that the same, because of the fact that it's not, it's about the community, it's not what I personally bring to the dices around my political view on it, it's about the community's concern, it's about first and foremost, the policies of the strategic plan that we do have set forth, which is our guiding post. But ultimately, it's about that passion for the people that you have, that you've built connections with, continue to stay open-minded, be curious, stay curious, and it'll get you the results. The political stuff will go away.
Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Joe, you indicated you had a question as well.
Thank you. I wouldn't be a good lawyer without a good hypothetical, so we're going to go through this a little bit. Many of you may know that our community center was built many years ago, and there was some hope that we would have a Phase Two in the future. So let's say that Phase Two's coming in, let's say that it can be built, and we've cleared all the environmental concerns, and the zoning and all that, but we have two competing groups that are coming in. The youth want the center expanded, so they can have more space to do all the great things that they do. But there's a possibility of putting a senior center there, a brand-new senior center, where our most vulnerable in our community, and the ones that have been here the longest, have an opportunity to have expanded hours, a better facility along the way. So the seniors are concerned that, you know, having all those youth around might knock them over, and they'll break their hip, and then they'll be out of commission, and, you know, all that jazz. And the young people don't necessarily want all those old people around, right? So you've got two competing voters, older population, that certainly comes to the polls, parents with youth, who definitely have a passion for their community. What process would you engage in, and what steps should you take, to help you get to a decision on which project to pursue?
So we're going to go back to the first order we had. We'll go Chris, Kelly, then Tina.
I would borrow this one from the city. I'm going to actually bring the two parties together, I would say first, and really get to know what their concerns are, press for specifics around, what are the youth concerned? You mentioned that they don't want, they don't want the old people around, well, we need to find out the why. The old people don't want the young people around because they're loud, or they're going to create noise, whatever it may be, we need to find out the why. It's not about, again, what I'm trying to pursue, we need to come and untie the knots, there's knots that we need to get through. So it would be first, getting the people together to talk about what their concerns are, so they can eat, and hear each other, and actually come to an agreement, okay, I didn't know that. Similar to Metro Flex, we didn't, you didn't know as a council that Metro Flex was being used by the youth until they came and made a public comment. Same thing happens with, with that, the project that you bring up. Now that we get it, now we press for specifics, if there's still an objection, what concerns you about that? Listening skills, being able to listen to them and physi, you know, and connect the benefits of the, of the two being together, the why. As soon as the people can hear the why, now they'll start connecting the dots, because you've acknowledged them, you've, you've actually utilized your resources that you have, you come up with a solution, and you come up with the resources, and then that together, you can come to that, either an agreement to come at different times, or, like I attended a Super Bowl watch party this weekend, there was old people and young people on there, there was a lot more young people, but they were at the, they were at the, they were at the party together. Why? Because they, they seen, they, and some of them weren't even watching the game. But the same thing, that didn't, that happened organically. But first, we got to bring the people to the table to talk, and that's what I would do and how I would approach that. And then from there, I would then come to, we would come to a plan together, I would consult my fellow council members on a plan that we can move forward with something that's for everybody's voice, not just what one side or the other wants.
Thank you, Chris. Kelly?
A great answer, Chris. I second everything that he said. I think also, you know, being in the conservation space, actually, there's a, it's historically been a very, much older space, and as one of the, you know, first younger people in my organization, Issaquah Alps Trails Club, is definitely, you know, kind of an interesting space to navigate. So I definitely agree that, you know, listening and bringing people together and being, and I think that's also part of the, you know, humanizing the other, the other side, kind of getting back to Tola's, Councilmember Martz' earlier question about, you know, partisan anger, bringing people together and saying, hey, this is what we want, and this is why, and so that you're not necessarily straw-manning one side or the other. I think also, with this specific example, there are ways to kind of figure out, you know, oh, maybe the kids or the youth with families aren't going to be using the community center at, you know, during school day, and so maybe that's when you could have more senior-focused programming. And then after school is when the seniors might be, you know, doing their other activities, and so that's when you could have more family-oriented programming. But I do also agree that, you know, there can actually be like huge benefits from bringing people together across generational divides. You know, there's one program actually where they had, I think, like preschoolers or something, or kindergartners go into nursing homes and like hang out with the folks there. And though, I mean, that's just like great for everyone involved, so I think, you know, having some of those programs which are actually like intentionally about bringing those two groups together, I think would also be a good way to do it. But ultimately, you know, first starting with bringing people together, asking about their concerns, figuring out, are there ways that we can, you know, have, have both parties, you know, use it at different times, and also have intentional spaces where they can come together.
Thank you, Kelly. Tina?
They're great ideas. I love it, and also would agree with all of them. I love imagining this scenario, the community center was the first image I have of Issaquah. So sitting in Gilbert, Arizona, we pulled up the cities around which my husband had gotten a job in, and was like, oh, Issaquah, and I clicked on, you know, the city government page, and bam, there's the community center, right? So it's like burned in my mind, like what this town is. I think it would be an amazing way to bring folks together. I think there are lots of creative things that we could look at, in terms of how the building is set up, in terms of who enters where, to second what both of these candidates have said, thinking about engaging the community in that process, and so creating a, I would think it'd be a good idea to create a temporary commission with members from both of the parties that were interested in looking at their problem, coming up with solutions. So basically tasking the community to provide some options for us. And I think, you know, selecting potentially either a council member or a number of the city employees that would be able to kind of check in and guide the process would be a critical part of that, and I think that's something that I would rely on the mayor and the city clerk, you know, to think about who would be best fit for this role. But I think as a council member, it's the idea to like empower the community members to make those choices, what, to tell us what's going to be best for them, right? And we can have really excellent sources of data, and so in terms of our community surveys, in terms of polls online, I think that surveys, in terms of polls online, I think that we have options, especially utilizing social media too, and hearing some voices. And although it can be, you know, a very particular subset of people that utilize social media, I just think that's another thing that we could think about, was ways to connect to especially younger folks to hear their voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And looking down the row, Councilmember Ray.
This has been absolutely fantastic. So one of our challenges we have, and we've talked a lot around this, which is community engagement. And we have boards and commissions, and we lean on them heavily, but that leaves out about 95% of the people who live in Isiqua. How would you go about structuring outreach so that we could hear more of the voices, particularly the voices of those that we typically don't hear for a myriad of different reasons?
I'm going to give them a second to think about your question, but the order this time will be Tina, Chris, Kelly. So whenever you're ready, Tina, but get your thoughts sorted together.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a really, you know, like, I think probably a fairly common problem, right? Like the folks that show up to the meetings, that post the comments, like, it's just a very small section of our community. So I'm going to draw on my experience with the point-in-time count last year. And so the last two times this has happened, they've utilized a different kinds of models. So typically, it's a kind of a crude census of literally going out and counting people's heads, like out on the street. But this last time, the model that was used was, I'm trying to think of the word exactly. Basically, it was like a seed and, let's see here. Sorry, I have, I have a note about it. Let me just double-check here. Oh, a respondent-driven sampling, that's what it, the methodology. So essentially, this particular methodology was selected because they wanted to reach people who had not been counted before, that were really hard to count. And so basically, they focused in on that and then drew, you know, based on their statistical analysis of the data collected, got a better picture of who was unhoused in a particular moment in our region. And so I think maybe we could utilize some services like that. We're looking at maybe selecting, you know, thinking about what are the groups that we don't hear from? Who are, who is that group generally? And how can we seed that group? And so encourage them to provide some feedback. And we might have to think about ways to incentivize that we haven't done previously. You know, like maybe there's a way to encourage somebody to give their voice and support that we haven't considered. And I'm not able to think on my feet that quickly, but I think that would be a conversation to have essentially is like incentivizing those groups, planting the seed in those groups. And with this particular model, it was like you got, you know, three coupons of your seed, and then you give those three to people that you know in your sphere. So we're assuming that like you and also are connected to other people who are probably not getting counted. And so it was really exciting and fascinating to see a different kind of approach of that because I've, you know, seen how hard it is to literally try to count somebody in a night, you know, to go into an area where there's tents everywhere, and you're like, how many people might be in that tent? No idea, right? So I think that's something I would consider using technology for that.
Thank you, Tina. Chris?
I'm going to go where the people are at. What I mean by that is, you know, whether it's man in the barbecue at the Quanis Club barbecue, talking to, talking to people as they come up and get the salmon, you know, whether it's watching a Super Bowl party with the, up in the Highlands. You're going to go where the first community's at because that's what's important to the community. And really building that connection genuinely by just showing up is first and foremost because then they see who you really are as a person and as a community member. You're not in it for your own intent. And on top of that, you can get the organic, genuine conversations started with their concerns. And it's by asking those questions, getting to know them. Hey, tell me more about you. Tell me why. Tell me what concerns you. What keeps you up at night? I get the pleasure of doing that every day at work, so it, I do it out in the community. That's how I've built relationships through the boards and commissions, working with different boards and commissions, working, working with each of you on the strategic plan, or the economic development plan, or the comprehensive plan. Asking those true questions is where we connect and build those connections through the conversations that we do have organically and genuinely so that I can make a better decision, share those with my fellow council members, share those with staff, and say the real concerns that the members have out, outside of the council. Because that's where that really happens, is in the community. Whether they're at work, going to the place of businesses, walking in their doors, asking how business is, getting to know what their, their pain points are. Theft, hiring people, keeping their doors open during a bomb cyclone, that's all important, right? So I, you don't do that by just sitting and looking and reading the paper. You do it by going out where the people are, meeting the business owners where they're at, because they're running their business. They're taking care of their kids at home, and they want to bring them to a, a Super Bowl event, you talk to the people there. Because that's when they're willing to talk, and they're like, hey, you're, I mean, it's not, I don't have to go for the title. I'm doing it because I genuinely care about the people. I genuinely care about what they are about and why, and that's what sets me apart as far as just the connectivity piece of it, because now I can make a sound choice for them, not my intent. Together as a council, we can feel better about, hey, we really truly listen to the, the community on anything and everything that's possible because we got their input.
Thank you, Chris. Kelly?
Great. Yeah, I second everything that both Tina and Chris said. I would also add that I think part of outreach is also, you know, having good public information of what the city council's up to. For example, it is actually not that easy to figure out what the city's council's talking about week to week. You have to go in, click into like the document center, and then scroll down to the bottom of this terrible PDF viewer. And so I think part of it is just, you know, making it easier for people to know what's going on in the city so that if people are interested and go online, then they can figure it out easily without spending too much time. I also agree that, you know, we need to be out there in the community, talking to people, not just, you know, when it's election season and we want to ask people for their vote, but also, you know, just to understand what people's problems are, whether it's through their organized groups. But also, most of the people that we aren't reaching, they might not actually be part of any kind of organized group already. And so the question is, how do we reach those folks? And I think that is actually a big challenge. You know, I know that, you know, some of the city council members, like you all, have been trying to, you know, talk to folks that maybe live in affordable housing developments or, you know, some of those folks that typically are not engaged because they're busy and have a lot else going on in their lives that they're not, you know, drawn to necessarily public comment on some issues. And so I think, thinking about, you know, what are the types of, what are the types of things that will get people to come out? And in terms of, you know, incentivizing them, maybe it could be something like, oh, you could get like coupons to local business or something like that, or, you know, snacks or whatever the case may be. I think, you know, using those types of incentives could be a good way to do it. But also, you know, having presences at things like the farmer's market where people, like lots of people go to that, as we just learned, like 4,000 people per week. So just having presences at places where people are already going on a regular basis and have it just be kind of an open conversation to learn more about, you know, what people are thinking about, I think is really important.
Thank you, Kelly. Council and Councilmember Martz, looking to see if there are any other questions? And if not, the next part of our process would be to go back into executive session and have you discuss the qualifications of the candidates. So we will be moving upstairs and going into executive session at 8:48. For approximately, give me a sense of time. Twenty minutes.
Thirty.
For thirty minutes. Okay, you can always add ten.
Yes.
Okay. For thirty minutes. Okay. So we are heading back in. Councilmember Martz will use the same meeting we did before. He's already gone.
He's already gone.[1124.38]
Councilmember Marts, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Thank you. So we are back out of executive session at 9:23, and I will give a little explanation about the process going forward. This process is part of our, I'm going to check with the city clerk, part of our code, rules and procedures. Part of our rules and procedures. So the executive session was used to discuss qualifications, and now I'll go through the process that is listed in our rules and procedures. The, I will open up the floor for nominations, and so would a council member like to nominate an appointee to council president position number one? Okay, council president, councilmember Ray.
I would like to nominate Kelly Jiang.
Councilmember Ray.
I'd like to nominate Chris Richley.
Is there any additional nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tina Hayes.
Is there any discussion on the nominees? I'm looking to those that made nominations. Council president?
Once again, just really, really strong set of candidates, strong set of answers. To me, I think what Kelly brings to the table is a strong connection between the environment and housing components, the ability to speak to that as someone who's young and experiencing that herself, and just in general, a strong understanding of policy and those components for the city. And so those were some of the reasons why I nominated her.
And actually, I need to just make sure I tell everybody, the nominations are closed.
Yes.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak to that nomination before we move on to the next nomination? Okay, oh, I'm sort of seeing like, councilmember Hall, would you like to talk to the nomination of Kelly Jiang? Go ahead.
Would it be appropriate to share kind of general comments about how I approached this?
Your thought process? Would be lovely to share.
Okay, cool. I think this is easily one of the most challenging decisions that I've made in the last couple of years on council. I mean, the councilmembers here know how much I turn on things, so I thought I'd kind of just work through my own personal process and, you know, just recognize that we all approach this differently on the council as well. So for many of the candidates that I spoke to personally too, I talked about kind of what I was looking for and mentioned this with them, like someone who could do their homework and show up prepared, someone with that policy analysis mindset, which just also want to acknowledge that that can come from a lot of different places, professional experience, volunteering with boards and commissions here at the city, lived experience as well, someone with alignment with our strategic planning documents, or someone could kind of speak to why they feel differently about that confidently, and then someone who brings something new, right? Someone who has that new perspective, someone who shows up a little bit differently than the rest of us. And that last part was really important for me, because I think for the most part, looking at the entire field of candidates, all 12, everyone to me showed that they could do their homework. I think most everyone showed that that policy analysis mindset that I was looking for in one way or another. Most everyone spoke to their alignment with the vision that we've set as a city in our various planning documents, but not everyone shows up in kind of a different way than each of us do. That doesn't necessarily mean that they wouldn't make excellent councilmembers. In fact, I think the vast majority of everyone that applied would make an excellent councilmember, but our job as council is hard right now because there are two questions at play, picking an excellent councilmember or deciding what is right for this particular moment that we're in right now, right? And we're all going to think about what's right for this particular moment in a little bit differently. So anyways, that's kind of how I've kind of distilled thinking about candidates. I hope that shed some light on kind of how I've been thinking about it. Given all that, I do want to speak to Kelly, who I think stands out as uniquely qualified in my mind, really impressed with how she approaches the process of policymaking and thinks deeply about the issues facing local governments, enjoyed our conversations about the issues, really think that your experience in kind of the green finance and clean energy and understanding that the balance that needs to be struck between conservation and stewardship and sustainability and development and growth and innovation is really impressive. I also think as a young person too, or as a previous young person, I'm 30 now, like it's so important to encourage young people in government too, so I just want to acknowledge that as well. You are one of the most well-spoken 20-somethings I have ever spoke to in my entire life, and I think your voice would be an incredible addition to our council. Everyone who sat in front of me, all three of you, would also make incredible additions to our council, which is really, really difficult. So those are just some of my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to echo that we can't go wrong with the three candidates that we have in front of us. I've been impressed with all three of you. All three of you have reached out to understand what's going on. That's not always the case. We've had people make the final rounds who didn't do that kind of outreach, and I've heard it in all three of your answers. But I'm also going to be supporting Kelly at this point. I think that she's shown her leadership on the Iskua Alps Trails Club. I got to know her on the Strategic Plan Update Task Force, which of course Chris was one of the co-chairs on, but I thought that Kelly was a, that was an august body, and being a young person in that room and able to stand up and argue her points persuasively took a lot of guts, and I've seen a lot of guts from her. I think it's also important that she's drawn just a vast array of support in the community in the letters that have come into us, including incumbent in this position, which is not a requirement but is something that I think that should be considered. So for all those reasons, you know, like I said, I don't think we can go wrong tonight, but I'm supporting Kelly. Thanks.
Would anyone else like, thank you, councilmember Marts, would anyone else like to speak to this nomination before I move to the next? Okay, councilmember Ray.
Thanks, Mayor Pauli. I think it's really clear that we have a plethora of riches here, and this is why we're all really grumpy right now, because it's a very, very difficult decision to make. And I looked at this from a, what will make us a better council? And that was my primary driver in all of this, was what makes us better, what will help us better represent the people here and make better decisions. So when I started looking through that lens, I found that Chris had the city experience that really set him apart, his time on EVC and his time chairing EVC, co-chair of the Strategic Planning Task Force. All are things where he's been actively engaged with city activities, understands what's going on, and has demonstrated leadership in those deliberative bodies. He also shows up and does the work. I mean, he wasn't just on the committees, he participated in the committees, he chaired the committees, he showed up, he got it done. I'm also impressed with Chris's business acumen. He understands our business community, he understands not just the, his business in the Highlands, but he understands the larger business in the Chamber of Commerce and the working environment here, which is super important right now as we try to build out the Iskua we want to have, which is a great place to work, a great place to live, and a great place to play. And we know one of our biggest problems is we have to have a favorable business environment as well as to take on other issues such as transit and housing. But he also understands the community. He's made a living out of understanding the community, and he has built his credit union by understanding the community and making it that the people who are his members are his focus, and I think that is super important. And he has this very strong network in the community, both as a direct result of his work but also his volunteer activities. He also lives, he's one of those rare unicorns who lives, works, and plays here, and I think that brings an interesting perspective. He also is raising a family here, and I think what he brings to this council are some perspectives that we don't have right now that I think are incredibly valuable to us and to making this the great community we all want it to be.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this nomination? I'm not seeing anyone else. I'll move to the third nomination. Deputy Council President, would you like to speak to the third nomination?
Sure. I was very pleased to nominate Tina because for many reasons, she has a wonderful background in human services. I've been really impressed with your ability to do research and ask tough questions, which was very characteristic of the person who held the seat prior. That was one thing we admired about Vicky as well. I loved your response to Bill Ramos, that arts are a serious business, because I think it illustrates, we have to, we balance between getting along with our fellow councilmembers, getting along with people in our community, but also standing up for the things that we believe in. And I know you've had a good experience on the Arts Commission, and I've heard from people on the Arts Commission who very much look forward to having you on the council. I think that your background as a counselor gives us a perspective on human relations that would be very important on the council, and your work with people in incarceration and marginalized communities, I think is a voice that is really important to us as well. So I'm very honored to have nominated you.
Are there any other councilmembers to speak to this nomination? I'm not seeing any. I am going to go through a description of the process for voting. So if there's no further discussion, the nominees will be voted on in the order the nominations were made. The process continues until a nominee receives a majority of the votes. In this case, tonight, that would be four votes. This method requires that a councilmember wishing to vote for a candidate appearing later in the list of nominees must vote against earlier nominees to reserve their vote for their chosen nominee. The first nominee receiving a majority vote is declared the new councilmember. And so at this point in time, the city clerk would also like me to clarify that if there is a tie vote, what your preference would be. You have several options. One, that is typically the least desirable for city councils, is to have their mayor break the vote. It's one of the rare times that Americans do that. Typically, in our council, you have chosen to go back to executive session, or you have chosen to speak again to the different candidates to see if you can change somebody's vote. So any preference, or would you prefer to, I think we should clarify how you would break a tie now versus actually having a tie. So your thoughts? Council president?
As somebody who has gone through this and experienced being the person who was voted on, I think it's important to let the council do the deliberation, especially when we're in a situation right now with three nominees, and just letting us either speak to it or if we decide at that point that we want to go back up, but that would be my preference.
Any other thoughts on that?
Just to say, yeah, that sounds good. Let's start conversation here on the dais if we feel like we need to.
I like it. Okay, not seeing any others. Oh, sorry, deputy council president.
The way that you described it, Amir, was a little different than I understood it. I understood we had more than one yes vote that we could make, and the way that you said it, it sounded like we really only have one yes vote.
Let's have the clerk clarify.
Okay.
City clerk? Yeah. Sorry, I moved so I can see you as you vote. Yes, so you may, rather than a must, that should be a may, so you, it's just an explanation that if you would like to withhold your yes vote for a preferred candidate lower on the list, you do need to then vote against an earlier candidate, but certainly you can all vote yes or no for any of these three candidates. We're not tracking how many times you're voting yes or no. Each vote is a fresh start. Does that clarify?
Is that clear? Councilmember Marts? Okay. Okay, so I will start with the first nominee, Kelly Jiang. All those in favor of appointing Kelly Jiang to city council position number six signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
I see three hands raised. Does that require the others to state on the record no? Okay. All those not in favor, please say no.
No.
Nope.
Three noes. The next candidate, all those in favor of appointing Chris Richley to city council position number six signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see three. All those opposed signify by saying no and raising your hand.
No.
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 And three noes. I'll move on to the third candidate. All those in favor of appointing Tina Haye to city council, Tina Hayes to city council position number six, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand.
No.
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 See one aye and five noes. We did not have a unanimous vote of four. City clerk, what is your recommendation for the next step? Discussion on the dais?
So the council has a number of options now. You could choose to go back into executive session, you could run through the three nominees again and revote on each one. That could be preceded by discussion. I suppose you could ask follow-up questions, you could also postpone this process to a later date or time. There's a few different options.
Thank you very much. And just to be clear, once three candidates are on a slate, we continue to vote on all three candidates on the slate until somebody has four?
Yes, and in the order they were nominated each time.
Okay, thoughts? Could you indicate what your preference is by raising your mic, and I'll call on you? Council president?
I think I'm willing to discuss on the dais. Yes? Okay.
And by that you mean have each people, as they want to, discuss the different candidates again? Okay. Any other thoughts on how to proceed? Not seeing any. Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Hall, I love the look on your face.
Maybe I'll just jump in because I'm puzzled. So a number of us have had comments for particular candidates. And it seemed like, just in terms of process, some of us voted yes for one and no for the others, and some voted yes for multiple candidates. So I was wondering if maybe we want to take a moment to just reflect on that? Or if we don't want to, if we want to just move on to talking about candidates? I just thought there might be value in kind of having some sort of shared alignment with maybe process for voting? Thoughts from the other councilmembers on that? Because I guess in my head, like, voting no on a particular candidate doesn't mean I don't want to serve with them. Like, of course I want to serve with them. But going, just going through the very difficult exercise in my head of having heard from all, like, 12 amazing candidates, now three stellar final candidates, who I think is right in this moment for that chair, right? And just kind of focusing on one single candidate there. Was anyone else thinking about that a little bit differently? Do we want to just kind of reflect on that a little bit, or is that what everyone else was thinking?
Council President?
No, I think that's a good question. I wasn't paying attention to everyone's votes because it's enough for me to try and figure out what I'm doing. Were there people who did vote yes on multiple candidates? And if so, would you like to speak to that and how you might be thinking about it in the next round of voting?
Good point.
Well, that was me, and I am absolutely torn. I would love to serve with any one of these candidates. So, yeah, it just reflects in my mind that we just have some outstanding people in front of us.
Councilmember DeMichele, is there any conversation or comments you would like to hear back from the others that may help you get to your singular vote?
I think, yeah, I'm waiting to hear what other people have to say.
Thoughts? Councilmember Marts?
So, you know, I've had lots of these three to threes, right? The way that it works is we wait till somebody folds, right? That's what happened with Stacy and Paul. That's what happened in a couple of more recent ones, right? So that's where we're at. We just wait and see who had the strength of how strongly people feel for the votes that they've made. Unfortunately, that's what you get when you get a three-three.
So Councilmember Marts, after we finish with comments, you'd just like us to go do the vote again? Yep?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Additional comments? Council President?
I guess I would say, in my mind here, we've got two candidates of the three that I think are maybe a little bit more similar on housing and kind of, I don't know what it is that connects Kelly and Tina in my mind, whereas Chris has more of the business focus. And so that, to me, is just some of the ways that I'm thinking about it, whether that's a pro or a con for you. Yeah.
Councilmember Ray?
I think this is a really great dilemma to have. And this is the third time that I've been involved in an appointment. And it is the third time we have gone three-three. So I think it's me. It's not you. It's me. One of the things that I continue to come back to is, what do we need on this council? And what can we, you know, what does everybody bring to the party? And everybody, everybody, all three of you have great depth of experience and dedication and commitment to these roles and doing this. And individually, you have areas of extreme depth. Kelly, you are the environmental goddess. I mean, you definitely got it. And it's clear, and that's really important. And Chris, you're definitely the business guy. You understand the economic climate in Isaguá. You understand the players, where we're going, and what's necessary there. And Tina, you clearly understand the human services aspects and that interpersonal skills that you bring are just like off the charts. And so I'm having all sorts of very vulnerable, open moments today, so I'm just going to continue on that role. I think that what we are truly missing on this council right now, and this is why I nominated Chris, and it's not because, Kelly, I don't think you're amazing, and Tina, I don't think you're amazing, is I don't think we understand the, and this is no reflection on you, Council President, certainly, we don't understand the business climate here in town as well as we could. And somebody who could bring that depth of experience and the leadership that Chris has demonstrated in the community, I think, makes us a better council. We're a better council with any of the three of you. And so that's why it's a hard choice, right? Because it's trying to figure out what is that optimal configuration of skills that make us better? And what's that optimal personality type that allows us to be this unicorn council that really gets along and really is focused on doing the right thing and not doing the, you know, the dogmatic thing? So that's, you know, that's kind of, you know, to Zach Hallit, that's been my, kind of my, you know, my, throwing my thought process out there on the table for y'all.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I was hoping my vote would be my voice this evening, but I guess I have to speak. I agree with the members who have spoken today that we really have three excellent candidates that are vying for this position. And I think that says quite a lot about the strength of our volunteerism in town, the strength of the social fabric that keeps us together. I voted for Chris in the first round and for a couple of reasons. First, as a person that's a business owner here in town, he's really the only person that sees customers or people on a regular basis. I'm working in Bellevue, and Chris is working in Kirkland, and Barb is retired. But Chris is able to see various groups of people coming through his bank and talking to them about what's really going on in our community with our business climate and our economic vitality. And as Chair of the Economic Vitality Commission, he takes it a step farther by really finding out what's going on with the different plans that are going on, whether it's the Pioneer Development, I-90 Crossing, and he helped with the Title 18 land code review. More importantly, though, he pointed out that he was, has experience with budgeting and with long-term financial planning as part of his work, and he'd bring that skill to the council. I don't want to disparage any of the people sitting here in Ortola at his remote location, but we are not budget gods or goddesses, as the case may be. We have the ability to understand where the money's coming from, where the money's going, the restrictions on it. But I think we're lacking that long-term planning for financial matters that will, that I think we need to make sound decisions going forward. And so that's why I'm supporting Chris. One final reason is Chris shows up. I went to the Port Uncorked event, and Chris was there. I went to an event for the garage, and Chris was there. He shows up in places, like the State of the City event, and he was there. This job is really about meeting people where they are and having those conversations that are not planned, not at a formal meeting.
Thank you.
But they're conversations that really get to the grist of what is driving that person today? What's on their mind? What makes them get up in the morning? And we have some difficulty finding that in the community because our outreach efforts are not as strong as they were before we lost our paper. Our newsletter is read, but not read widely. People are more likely to be looking at their phone at TikTok than looking at a council meeting. We need a person out in the community like Chris who's going to places and has the time to do that in our community. So that's why I'm supporting him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts?
So the hour is late. Let me find the right way to say this. I think that Kelly's business acumen is every bit comparable to either of the other candidates. She's an executive with her company. She meets with customers on a regular basis. She's not meeting with customers that are, you know, coming in for five or 10 minutes or 15 minutes. But I don't think, I don't think there's a differentiation between these candidates if you're saying you want to have somebody with business acumen on the council. She's younger than our other candidates, but I'm convinced from my conversations with her that she's having the same sort of high-level business conversations, and she's going to be able to provide the same sort of high-level view into budgeting. I might disagree with Councilmember Joe a little bit about the skill set that we have on this council around budgets, but I think that Kelly wouldn't be in the position that she's in if she didn't understand how to build a strong budget with her customers. So I think that that's not the differentiator that it might otherwise be. So that's, now to say something more specifically positive about Kelly, I think that the environmental piece, we are, as a city, a spearhead for environmental action. We were one of the four, or one of the founding A5C cities. We, you know, I started on council under Ava Freisinger, who took second seat to nobody on environmental issues. And I think that Kelly would continue that long, fiercely strong environmental tradition that we have as a city where we take a backseat to nobody on environmental issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. And Deputy Council President?
Yes, I realize that I hadn't spoken to why I voted for Chris, and I would like to very much do that. We have two very, very well-run commissions that Chris led. And one of those is the Economic Vitality Commission. I don't think I had heard very much about that commission until Chris became the chair. And that commission has turned into a powerhouse commission. And that's because of the leadership that he has demonstrated there. And then in addition, our Strategic Plan Task Force was so well-run and came back with such a good product. And I have heard so many people say, "That is a wonderful strategic plan." And again, leadership, leadership was there, and Chris was the leader to that. I've known Chris through Kiwanis Club. And as Russell said, excuse me, Councilmember Joe said, it's getting late. He always, he shows up, and he's there. And he and I had a good discussion over coffee about affordable housing. And so when Chris talks about his finance background and his banking background, it's not just for the city's budget. It has to do with how do we, how do we build the housing that we need? And he has the background. He does that every day through his day job. And my real concern, as has been mentioned by our candidates, is nothing has happened with our housing. We are really not moving along. We're not meeting our targets. And I think having somebody on council who has that intimate knowledge of affordable housing and how we get not only affordable housing, but naturally occurring housing that is affordable, we have that in Chris's background. So I was, as I said, I'm very torn. We've got some wonderful candidates in front of us. But that is the reason that I was quite willing to put up my hand for Chris, so.
Any additional discussion before we start voting again? Thank you for all these comments. I think they're very, very helpful. Okay, Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, if that's okay with the rest of the councilmembers.
You're allowed to keep discussing.
I think it was really a good thing for conversation's sake to point out that we have some, like, very clearly defined issue-specific candidates, or candidates who have that kind of speciality experience in issues. And I think it's wonderful to show up in that space, whether it be in environment, in business, in banking, in finance, in mental health, and youth. I am actually trying to do my best to remove that from my thinking and think that really any one of us here on the dais can focus on a particular issue if we wanted to. Actually, when I think of Zach Hall, I don't necessarily think of like X issue or Y issue. I like to think of myself as kind of a generalist. But I think the value of having experience in issues, environment growth, budget business, human services, like, we have a whole array of highly professional staff that provide that kind of analysis, tell us the lessons learned in local government, in the local government project more broadly across the country. And I think our job in the project is a bit more simple, like, our role is more simple. Our role is to use all of that good information to clearly define what the problem is. And that information, by the way, is also public feedback and public engagement. There are lots of different taps that we tap for all the information that we use to make decision-making. So we clearly define problems, right? We kind of understand the context around the problem that's at play, what's been done before, what are the other kind of circumstances we need to be aware of that are potential other problems, of cascading problems? So anyways, all of that. We understand what the array of potential solutions that out there exist, and we develop evaluation criteria, right, to evaluate one solution against another solution. And using all that information as a group, essentially, we're a machine. It spits out what I, this is just kind of how I envision city councils, right? It spits out the right answer, or the right answer in that moment. And then we have other evaluation criteria that we develop from a policymaking stance, right, to make sure it's working right and to measure success and say, what doesn't success look like, and then go back to the drawing board if we need to. So I think any one of these three have that mindset to be able to sit here, not necessarily with a particular policy focus, and be able to distill complex information into a solution that we're now going to move forward as a community. But I still just think, from the application material, from her speech, from her answers to the questions tonight, from my conversations that I've had with her, I'm just really excited by this mind at work, by Kelly. And I would love to work with her here on the council. Again, I think any one of the three here have what it takes to have that policymaking mindset to show up in the way that we do and serve on that role. But I just wanted to, this is me being vulnerable too, and just kind of saying things as well. I just wanted to say, you know, that's another way that I'm kind of thinking about this, is kind of stripping that from it and thinking, what is the policymaking mind that I want to work next to as we go through the process together?
Thank you. Okay, looking around as well for comments before I do another round of candidate voting. Anybody wanting to make more comments, looking at Councilmember Marts? Okay, it is the same process as before. I'll pull it back up. All the three candidates are still on the slate. And I will go through as they were originally nominated. All those in favor of appointing Kaylee Jang, Kaylee, sorry, Kelly, Kelly Jang, yeah, different person, to City Council Position Number Six, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
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 That is three for and three against. I will move to the next. I will move to the next nominee. All those in favor of appointing, threw out my order, Chris Richly, to City Council Position Number Six, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Three, those opposed?
No.
No.
Three for, three against, and I will go to the last person on our slate. All those in favor of appointing Tina Hayes to City Council Position Number Six, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Two in favor and four against. We do not have a clear four-vote candidate on our slate. Councilmember Ray.
So maybe it's time to have that discussion about how we break a tie.
So you have, I'll let the clerk go over it better than I can, but to break a tie.
Well, I suppose that the vote would be announced and then you could choose to state your vote, so.
Is the question whether or not the mayor wants to break the tie, or does the mayor just decide to break the tie?
Well, I think it's healthy that, like previously, you had the conversation before about the expectation in advance, so the council and applicants knew what was going on, but you have the right to break the tie, a tie vote, unless it has to deal with an ordinance or a franchise or a resolution for the payment of money, which this is none of those. So that is, you have the ability to choose to do that.
Is this a tie? Is this defined as a tie?
A three-three vote, yes, which is why we have.
Oh, of a particular, oh, I thought not amongst the three.
Yeah, so I think the time to do it might be, might be when that vote is announced. So this round is done. So if there was to be a third round, and this is why we have a seven-member city council to minimize these situations.
So is the discussion for the council right now to decide if this is the final vote, or if they would like to have more discussion and have another vote?
We don't know what the vote will be on the nominees for this next round. Again, everyone can vote how they want. So I think it would be healthy to decide if you were, or the council, however, you want to determine whether you're going to participate in the vote and then just go through the rounds. If one of the nominees results in a tie vote, then you'd have that moment to weigh in.
Council President.
So I think the question before the council is really, are we at a point where we would like the mayor to break the tie? Are we at a point where we want to press pause, schedule another meeting, ask the community to provide feedback? Or are we at a point where we want to go up and have another executive session to discuss amongst ourselves about our preferences between candidates?
And lastly, do you want to do it on the dais? You could just continue your conversation on the dais and go for another vote.
So continue our conversation, comfort with the mayor, breaking the tie, pause and reconvene another meeting, or go up to another executive session. Keeping in mind, we have 90 days to make this decision before it goes to King County Council.
Chris, comments? Councilmember Marts?
Yeah, I guess at this, at this point, I think probably the fairest method in the process would be to have the mayor break the tie. I think we, everybody's made lots of arguments. I think that just wearing one side or the other down by another half dozen votes isn't the right way out of this. I think the right way would be to add another voice to the conversation. Sorry, Mary Lou.
Councilmember Ray?
As is often the case, I agree with Councilmember Marts. The one thing I don't want to do, and maybe I'll start with that, is I want to get this resolved tonight, I don't want to kick the can down the road. I was talking to Councilmember De Michele earlier this week, and it's like unless there was some very specific question that needed to be answered, I really thought we had an obligation to ourselves and to all of you to make a decision tonight. And so I really, I mean, I'll go through 10 rounds of voting, I've done it before, but, you know, I think we need to, whatever the case is, we need to bring closure tonight to the process because we owe that to you.
Councilmember Hall?
Well, maybe there's still topics worth discussing here on the dais. I just wanted to ask, and if it's appropriate, was there any change, I wasn't tracking the voting, was there any change in voting that happened between the kind of the first round of voting and the second round of voting? And if anyone felt so inclined, or felt it was appropriate for me to ask, would they be willing to share kind of what made them kind of change their vote? Maybe that could benefit the rest of us too, as we're considering, should we change our votes?
In the three-three part, there was no change.
There was no, oh, okay, I see.
Thoughts?
On whether or not the mayor should step in.
You have four choices.
Yeah. I don't necessarily see what we would get out of going into executive session again. So definitely rule that out. If there's anything, I mean, speak now for ever hold your peace, I guess, council, if there's any other kind of comments that you want to make. But other than that, I agree with the two previous comments that would have been said. I think perhaps maybe now is the time for you to step in. I'm also kind of curious what you think, Mayor Pauli, because in the past, that kind of ad hoc policy has been not to do that, but, I mean, do you want to share, reflect on that at all, or like how comfortable do you feel stepping in?
So I'm very comfortable. I think for the benefit of those sitting at this table, I do not participate in their deliberations upstairs. So the best practice is always for those that are sitting in the six council chairs to convince each other of why one of you should be picked over three of you when you all have such excellent qualifications. So I have been listening, I have been reading the material, I have had coffee with most of the candidates that you have spoken to. I'm not uncomfortable making this election. I think you have done your due diligence. I think you have poked, prodded, pushed, and pulled each other as much as I've ever seen for a council vote, so I do not have an issue breaking the tie. Council President?
Yeah. I don't see necessarily any benefit of going up to executive session. I think we've all said our piece and the vote hasn't changed. I don't have a problem with delaying necessarily, but I don't know that we would have additional So I think I'm okay with you breaking the tie.
Any other comments? City Clerk, I'm just going to verify that, is it just, am I able to speak to the candidates and their qualifications and then say my piece? Is that how we should proceed?
That seems reasonable to me.
Okay. So I hate you guys, this has never happened as far as I've ever known in any of these votes before. It is a first and it is awkward. I sit in a different chair than the elected council do. I will not be participating in dialogues with you discussing policy or working with you on the budget. I'm on the operations side and I hand things over to you, but I have to agree with 100% of the comments that they heard. This is probably, I've probably sat through six of these, this is the hardest that I've ever seen, only because you are all coming and speaking to the council on many, many topics that are top of mind for them, from affordable housing and social services to connections to the business community, to continuing our work as being a leader and steward in the environmental space. I am going to select Kelly Jang for the vacancy because I do believe at this point in time, in the city of Issaquah and with the current lay of the federal landscape, that in order to be an environmental champion and environmental steward at this time, I would like to bring some strength and bandwidth to that piece of our council conversation. And I appreciate her experience in that area, and I agree with Councilmember Hall that she will bring a very deliberative policymaking practice as a deep thinker and as a strategist. But it's the connection to the environmental piece that really swings me over. I also would say that during this upcoming election session, we are going to have at least one council vacancy, and that is a more difficult path to get on council, but we still do need to have a business connection, and we still do need to have housing advocates. So I'm hoping that while there is probably huge disappointment tonight for those that made it this far and didn't make it, that you do consider putting your hat in the ring for this council vacancy. We know of at least one that's going to be coming. Strange things happen during elections, and sometimes for unforeseen reasons, we also have a vacancy that we didn't know was coming. So please consider putting your hat in the ring, and congratulations, Kelly.
We should take the vote.
Yes, we need to take the vote.
Oh, so, too soon. So in this round then, as I go down through the slate, I will have a vote?
Yes, after the council members.
Third vote.
Let them vote yes and no, and then if the outcome is a tie, you can.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Kelly Jang to City Council Position Number Six, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Pause for a moment.
Okay, so seeing all in favor. Call for the no votes, if you don't mind.
All those opposed? I'll proceed through the slate. No, done, done, okay. I didn't break the tie. I weighed in, but I didn't break the tie, so. Counsel, this was really hard. I feel very honored to be able to sit up with, up there in the executive session with you and listen to how thoughtful you are and how much time you put in explaining what you heard and how that mattered to you in terms of how to fill out this seven-person body. So thank you for your hard work, it's very much appreciated. So that's a unanimous vote, six and oh. Kelly Jang is appointed to the position. Congratulations, now I can say it. And thanks to all, sorry?
Can we clap?
Yes, you can clap now. Congratulations to our new appointee. And thank you to all applied for this vacancy. We are fortunate, as you have heard over and over and over again tonight, to have so many capable residents living within our community who are willing to step up and give of their time to serve here. And I hope you will consider staying involved with us, whether it's your Board and Commission work, or whether you're interested in running for the vacant seat, that we know we will at least have one. So now, Kelly, I'm going to be giving the oath of office, if you want to come up. You are actually being sworn in today. So you're going to look at me and you're going to raise your right hand, and you're going to repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kelly Jang.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the city of Issaquah, Council Position Number Six.
To the city of Issaquah, Council Position Number Six.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Yes, so we need a pen. No worries. Thank you very much. Kind of shaking, this is a big deal. Do you need a copy of the city clerk? So come and take your seat, we're going to close out the meeting.
I'm not on the end anymore.
For a few months, yes. Again, to all the community members, to the deliberations of the council, to this fabulous candidate pool that we had, thank you all for coming and sharing, and thank you very much, Tina and Chris, for your second round participation, very much appreciated. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:18. McGavil.